Great life, but I can't do that.
Your arms will be tired by the.
Yeah. Oh, gosh. Stacy, how's life going?
Busy, but great.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
How are you, Bethy?
Pretty good. Pretty good. You know, I'm doing physical therapy for my shoulder and stuff and it's working and it's just it's made a big difference. I got the shot and then you got physical therapy. Although sometimes you do the exercises and you think, okay, this hurts, but it's gonna be better someday.
Yes.
But yeah. Just too much stuff to do at home.
I just sent you a picture of my setup. It's on your email. It's off cell phones.
Oh, all right.
Hey, we've got about thirty seconds.
I'll give, give us, give us another five.
Well, that's totally up to you.
No. Okay. Where's everybody? Oh. No, there's Allison.
There's two pages going right now, so we've got plenty of people.
Okay. Okay.
So are we recording?
We are recording and ready to go.
Fantastic. So thank you for coming this evening. It's March twenty fourth at six P M. Like to call the meeting to order. Do the pleasurable allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In real call, please.
Dick Olson. Matilda Novak.
Matilda is just entering right now.
Okay, thank you.
That's Chris.
Stacy Bartholomew.
I hear.
Ray Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Marilyn Smith.
Here.
Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
And I've seen Matilda.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Allison, Councilor Olson will join very shortly. He just was missing the link. But he'll be here.
Thank you.
Okay. So reading a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month on page three of the packet. Go there. Child Abuse Prevention Month, April two thousand twenty one. Whereas each April, Child Abuse Prevention Month activities are held in communities across the nation to raise awareness about child abuse and the need for the entire community to become involved. During this month of awareness, we renew our commitment to preventing child abuse and re-dedicate ourselves to working together to ensure all children can have a bright and hopeful future. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involving involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increases the likelihood of health problems, poor education performance, substance abuse, early pregnancy, and criminal behavior. These problems can compound themselves as a child becomes an adult. And whereas abuse and neglect are far more reaching than you might imagine, no socioeconomic group is immune. Children of all races and ethnicities are victims of child abuse. And whereas during two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, there were five hundred and thirty-five substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect in Lynn County and twenty-three Oregon children who died from causes related to familial and caregiver abuse and or neglect of seven neglect. Seventeen of those were five years old or younger, and twelve of those were seventeen year old. Those are seven, twelve to seventeen were less than one year of eight, one year old. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed through partnerships with community groups that help support parents to provide a safe and nurturing environment, child abuse is totally a community problem, affecting all levels of society, and the effects of child abuse need to be addressed by the entire community. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor of the city of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April twenty first, two thousand twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Albany and call upon all citizens and community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to recognize and prevent child abuse. As in witness that we're of, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city always be affixed to this twenty-fourth day of March, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you. So number four is legislative quali- quasi judicial public hearing. Am I should, should I read this, Allison? Okay. Persons wanting to address the council during public hearings have two options. Email the comments to the address provided. Please include your name, address to the public hearing. Comments received before noon on March twenty four twenty one will be read on the record. Move this over. To testify virtually during the public hearing, register by sending an email to them, address provided before noon on March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-one with your name, address, phone number. If you're speaking for or against or neutral on the project during public testimony, the mayor will call upon those who have registered to speak and therefore they will be unmuted at that time. So I have a statement to read here. My glasses on. Let me see, do we go to session now? Yes. Do I go and read it now, Allison? Yes, okay. Next on the agenda is a legislative quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning files Alpha November dash zero three dash two zero and Z C zero four two zero. The proposal is an annexation of a thirty-five point three-two acre property with zoning map amendment to residential single family zone. The annexation will also remove the property from tax taxing district of Albany Rural Fire District, Fire Protection District. I call to orders legislative session and judicial quasi judicial public hearing at what time is it? At six oh six P M. On March twenty fourth. If you wish to testify, there will be two options available, which will be described on the agenda. So it's been prescribed already. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? No, no counsel to just to declare. Do any members wish to report an ex parte contact? Okay. Do any members wish to report a site visit?
I can report a site visit. I've lived within half a mile of that property the entire time. In Albany and I walk past it on my with my dog four days a week.
Thank you. Any other members? Okay. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? No abstentions? Okay. Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any commission member in this hearing or decision and decision? If so, please turn off on your camera and raise your hand if you called upon. Or if you're attending the phone on phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called on. Are you none? At this time, I will call the reading of the meeting procedures. That would be Jeff Blaine or his representative. I believe it's coming Melissa Anderson. No joy?
Melissa was here a few minutes ago.
He's here. Melissa, it seems like your mics.
She's there. She's muted.
She did.
Nuts. Melissa, if you, if you go down to your microphone button, the lower left corner and hit that up arrow, you might be able to select a different microphone.
It shows that it's active on her screen from where I see it.
There she is. There it goes right there.
She may have selected a different, she may have a different microphone selected.
So Melissa, try this. Go to the speak, the speaker and go to the right of it and hit the arrow there and it should give you your options. You tried that?
Call in by phone?
There's a number she can call on the agenda.
And Melissa, if you want to use your phone, I can read the phone number to you. Okay, it's a two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two. Let me know if it asks for a meeting ID. Are you ready for a meeting ID or a passcode? Yep. Meeting ID is five, four, one, nine, one, seven, seven, five, zero, zero. Okay. Can you use a passcode? Okay, passcode is two, five, two, two, six, nine.
Right, can you hear us now?
And mayor, if need be, I think we can perhaps rearrange the order of the agenda and give us a chance to try to.
Can you hear me now? Very, very sorry for the delay. I did test the mic before and it was working, so sorry about that. I should have tried to chat with everyone before we started, so I'll just go ahead and read the the script that is required. So for all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standard staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe will apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to that issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So. And I believe the the next step would be the the staff report. Shall I continue, mayor?
Yeah, at this time, I'll call Melissa to read the staff report.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is try to share the screen. And so can, can you see the presentation at this time?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this is an annexation for a property and it includes the zoning map amendment. And this property is located north of Oak Creek. It's to the east of Lochner Road and this illustration shows its location. And the proposal is annexation of this thirty-five point three-two acre lot. It's currently vacant. And with that is a rezone because the applicant proposes future development in the form of a residential subdivision, but that would be later after, after this, they'd have to apply for, for that. So concurrent zoning map amendment is to the residential single family zone, the RS six point five zone. And also with the annexation, it also would mean that the property is technically removed from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District because it's coming into the city. And the fire department would then be still addressing any fire issues obviously for public safety, but it's that's why there is actually two ordinances with this. One ordinance is for the annexation with rezone. The other ordinance is for removing the property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. So the process for this is a type four process, which is where it goes to the planning commission for a recommendation, but the final decision is the city council. And the criteria for this is under the annexation criteria of the Albany Development Code two point one one oh and the zoning map amendment two point seven four oh in the development code. And all these criteria are addressed in the staff report. And so agency notice was sent out as well as public notices. Public notices including posting the property, mailing to surrounding property owners, as well as publications in the local newspaper. And prior, the planning commission did have a public hearing that was March first. They recommended approval to the city council and that was a unanimous vote. And so tonight we have the public hearing for the city council's decision. Who's the final decision making authority? So existing land uses, this illustration shows that it's currently vacant. The property just to the north is also vacant, but then to the north and the east is residential subdivisions. There's also the rail line to the north. And then across to the west is Lochner Road and Snow Temple, Oregon Youth Authority. Immediately south is an existing home on a large lot, but also primarily vacant. This illustration shows the location in relation to the urban growth boundary and the city limits. Because one of the requirements for this to be eligible for annexation is that it is within the urban growth boundary and also that it's adjacent to city limits. And so both of those requirements are met. And you can see easily on this illustration that it is. And so for this rezone to the RS six point five district, which is residential single family zone, average minimum lot size, six thousand five hundred square feet. It needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the long range planning map. And so that shows that the comprehensive plan designation is urban residential reserve. And so there's a handful of zones that are consistent with that, which includes the RS six point five. So that meets that criteria. But it's also in the South Albany area plan zone, actually, long range planning area. And that also calls for low density residential use. So the RS six point five zone is consistent with that intention for the use of the property. So really, there's no, nothing really out of the ordinary that I would say about this proposal. It's pretty straightforward. And in the staff report that was included, it showed how it addressed and met all of the criteria and that we recommended this annexation with zoning map amendment with one condition of approval. And that's been met already by the applicant. Technically, we do have two separate ordinances that are proposed for the council to make a decision for adoption. One is for the annexation of rezone and the other one is just for removal of the property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. So the city council's options are to approve with the condition as recommended in the staff report, approve with an amendment or to deny the application. So do you have any questions? Yes.
Yes, Melissa, notwithstanding what we have in the South Albany area plan and the fact that this is a reserve area that's kind of is being considered for potential development down the road. Any hints or ideas how this may or may not even be affected by what's coming down the road at us for HB two thousand and one?
I don't see how the HB two thousand and one is really going to affect this. I mean, they can, you know, build the subdivision, prepare for the lots and depending on when they complete that and when we adopt an ordinance. they complete that and when we adopt an ordinance that meets any requirement for HB two thousand and one, they may be able to build a single family or duplexes on the lot. But, you know, I think.
Without knowing those final rules, there's no way to determine whether or not they would be required to do any of that.
No, I, no, I think HB two thousand and one is is it optional? Is that they're they're gonna, they propose and they're gonna have to go through a subdivision application process through the planning division and community development department afterwards to get meet that approval, but then that is to put in all the infrastructure and prepare the lot so they could actually adopt the plat. Then you have legal lots to build on and then at that stage, I'm not sure when that would occur, when they'd be ready for that possibly next, you know, later this year or early next year. And at that time, they'd be applying for building permit. And so then, you know, presumably they'd be applying for building permits for single family homes. But with HB two thousand and one, it could also be that there's development code that would allow the option of doing duplexes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Oh, yeah, I don't see my cellphone on the screen, but I guess you guys can see me. The question I have is, is six point five or six point five the smallest lot size that we can legislate? Or can we go to a smaller lot size? And the reason I ask is because we have a shortage of affordable housing. And I was thinking if we could go to a smaller lot size, perhaps more affordable houses would be built and perhaps we could solve part of our problem. So the question is, is six point five as small as we can get?
No, we do have an RS five or average minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. But that is currently not what they're proposing to do and that was not what was advertised either.
No, I know that, but I'm wondering if we might have them come back and do that or we might tell them to do that. Or maybe we ought to think about that in the future. So. That's why I asked the question.
Go ahead, Melissa, please.
I was just gonna say that. I don't think we can really require them to do the RS five if if that was on the table, I think public notice would be in order because that was not advertised.
Okay, another question I have is can we build triplexes and fourplexes on a lot that size six point five? Hey, I sure know.
Currently, we can, our six point five, the zone would just allow a single family home and duplexes on on corner lot.
Well, the state seems to want us to build triplexes and fourplexes and the six point five would not allow that, correct?
The current code would would not allow in in that zone.
But we're being having our arms twisted to do what the state wants us to do. How about after we're forced to be in compliance with the state?
Yeah, well, that there will be, that's a planning process that's going through now. And eventually later this year, I think there'll be development code proposed to meet any state minimum mandate. But that that's not, it's still in the planning process right now.
Well, yeah, that's for the short time being, but how about after we're forced to do what the state wants? Can, could a fourplex be built on a RS six point five lot?
You know, with the the outcome of that, after the planning study is done, I'm not sure if, you know, you will be able to to do that. I think duplexes and single family homes, duplexes have to be allowed in any single family home zone and lot. But not necessarily triplexes and fourplexes. I think that's, there may be certain criteria that have to be met before you could actually be considered for that. But like I said, that's in a planning stage and I'm not necessarily the expert either on all the details of that. And Catlin, our long range planner, is working on that.
Okay, well, that's that's something I'd like to hear about in the future. So, thank you.
Counselor Johnson had a comment or question?
Yes, I, Melissa, I kind of like Counselor Olson's idea. Does this, okay, would it stop the developer from changing in the middle of the stream? Say, okay, yeah, we are gonna go, we do wanna go to a smaller lot. Like you said, it'd have to be a public hearing and stuff, but are they stuck with the six point five? Or the, yeah, the six point five, or could they change it in the middle? If they decided to go with a little bit smaller?
What you mean after, after this meeting, you mean?
Yeah, after we do this, could they change it in the future?
Well, they'd have to come back through again. This application came in last year and after, you know, our whole process, we were working with the applicant with the condition of approval. Finally got to the point where we could then advertise, prepare the staff report, go to the planning commission, but that this started last year.
Yeah.
But and so they'd have to start over again.
Oh, sure. No, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. I was just thinking that it might be possible, but no, I think it's I'm all for the annexation. I think it's great that they could, they want to build residential down there. So I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Peter, you have a question?
I was just gonna say that we will get the answer to Counselor Olson's question about can duplexes be built on RS six point five and I'll I'll send that out to you.
Good. Thank you, Peter. Any other, any other counselors have any questions? So I would, I would like to find out if there's any plan for grocery or or anything along those lines because currently South Albany is in the food desert. You know, we have to, I live in South Albany. Matter of fact, I live not too far from this property. And I have to either shop in Geralis or come from work and go all the way up through town to the Ward Warner Ward three where Ward three has all groceries, most of the grocery stores in the city. And so is there any in plan about that, having a condition of building this development?
Good question. For this area, there's no plan for that. The long range plan, it's intended for density, like, you know, single family homes as opposed to apartments, let's say. It's not, the long range plan for this property is there's, it does not propose like small commercial and like that. So if that was even to be considered, we would have to amend our long range plan and our comprehensive plan map. And the the South Albany area plan in general does have areas identified for commercial, neighborhood, commercial, public facilities and the like, roadways. But this particular property is intended for residential.
Can you, can you tell me how many homes are proposed to be in this area?
Oh, how many, how many lots?
Yes.
That, I can look that, look that up. The, because we don't have the subdivision on the table, it wasn't at the top of my head because they're actually gonna have to submit that that plan and the applicant should be here and can identify that. I can also look into my other files in the meantime and and look up the their kind of concept layout to see how many lots they were thinking they could get out of this.
Can you, can you get that to Peter and get that back to us at some point? I appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Peter, did you have something?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just gonna let you know that Matthew Rutgers of our community development department is probably able to answer that question right now for Counselor Olson about RS six point five.
Good evening, everyone. So Counselor Olson, to your, to your question, I actually had just heard from Ann that the proposed House Bill two thousand and one amendments would result in triplexes and duplexes being allowed on lots of sixty four, sixty five hundred square feet or larger and fourplexes on lots of seven thousand square feet or larger. If if the lots were were large enough to support that, you know, it's gonna depend on the builder.
Oh, if they're six point five, that limits it to triplexes.
Currently, the way that the the proposed amendments are written is that's correct. It would limit that.
That that satisfies Counselor Olson for now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Matt, Matt, Kathy, I appreciate it. No problem. Any other questions? Counselors? Okay, I'm gonna go down to item eleven. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments that would have, you may have for the commission?
There we go. Can you hear me?
I can hear someone.
Okay, that's me. So let's see if I can figure out, I don't know how to turn them.
There you go. You had it. There you go.
My name is Jed Truitt. I'm representing the applicant in this. Melissa's covered everything fairly thoroughly, but I can give you some information, I think, that'll help answer some of your questions. There's a quite a bit of wetlands on the property and so the the future subdivision that's proposed is looking more like a cluster subdivision, so smaller lots to get a more kind of dense development, which I think would make Counselor Wilson happy. We're looking at lots that are, some of them that are near five thousand square feet and just taking it kind of a clustering subdivision type approach. But I can't really represent the subdivision. I'm not working on that. I've just seen pictures of of what the concept is. But assuming this process goes through, then there would be, of course, the subdivision submitted at some point, some form or fashion, but that's generally what it'll look like. It'll be some open spaces with wetlands and then more compact development in the upland areas. And there will be some wetland impacts too, so it's, I mean, there's a lot of wetlands up in that area, so.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jed. Is there anything else, Jed?
I think that's it. I think Melissa covered everything else, but I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
So is there, has there been a traffic study done out there? I should ask this Melissa as well. Well, the increase in traffic is gonna, how's that gonna impact traffic through that area?
The layout that I'm looking at has approximately eighty lots. I don't know if that's what's gonna be submitted or not. And I'm sure there's a threshold requirement usually based on minimum peak hour trips that that kind of sparks that requirement for a traffic study. And Melissa probably knows more about that than I do.
So I, I can actually feel that that question if you guys.
All right, thank you, Matthew.
So if it generates more than a hundred peak hour trips, a traffic study would be required. You know, right now, this is, this is just a, an annexation, a zone change. So that would be, we delve into that with the actual subdivision application.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to hear. Thank you very much, Matthew. Is there any other comments from the, from the applicant? Excuse me, excuse me, Counselor Olson has a question.
Do you plan to sell the individual lots or do you plan to build all the houses yourselves?
The client plans to build all the houses themselves.
Okay, will you have them for sale or are they all gonna be rental?
Oh, no, they'll all be for sale.
Thank you.
And imagine since the lots, some of the lots are smaller, there may, they may only end up being a single family and house built two thousand and one may or may not come into play for duplexes.
Yeah, thank you. I personally like bigger lots, but if, if they end up with fourplexes or bigger, I they don't have the attraction that they used to have for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we're done with point eleven, that we will now take, whether we will now be taking public testimony. First and foremost, those in favor of the applications followed by those in opposition or with concerns. Finally, from anyone neutral, if anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of the testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the email address c d a a at cityofalbany.net. And I have the sheet and no one submitted any comment. So I'm gonna move on from there. There was none submitted. Thank you, Allison, for bringing that to my attention. Those who registered to speak, there was no one registered to speak on this item. Okay, there's no public sign of sheet. We will not be taking, there's no more testimony. So I need to read this whole thing, right, Allison? It's like a repeat. We will not be taking public testimony. For those who did not register to speak beforehand, if you'd like to speak, turn it on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon by the chair and unmuted. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the mayor can call upon you to speak. Does anyone raise their hand? Anybody unmute? Let me take a look. I don't see anything on the other page. Okay, I still, just there is none. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? No comments have been made. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about this application? See anything? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? And since there was, oh, excuse me. Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? Nothing. I'll move on. Point eighteen, does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony since there was no comment in opposition? I'm gonna go ahead and say, assuming you may have nothing to say. There you go. I appreciate that. Does any staff member have any wish to respond to the testimony presented since there was none? Item twenty, does any member, anyone have procedural questions that would like, they would like to raise at this time? If so, please turn on your camera, raise your hand and be to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair or mayor call upon you to speak. Check the second page. I don't see anyone. I declare this public hearing closed at six thirty eight PM, March twenty fourth. Does the city council wish to discuss this case or ask any questions of the staff? So I see Councilman Marilyn Smith.
Yes, thank you. I think it would be helpful for everyone before we move on to review the criteria for the annexation and for the rezoning.
So Counselor, have you had a chance to take a look at the minute, the notes that were sent out to you? Any other questions from counsel? Do I hear a motion? There are two ordinances for your consideration and your counsel packet.
Is Sean Kidd on, in the meeting right now?
He just popped in.
Okay, yeah, we'll need to do a first reading on both the ordinances at some point here.
That's, that's true, but first there's some sample, sample motions that are on. I believe that all the council has sample motion them. And we would, we would ask that you would read one of the ones that you feel is appropriate there so that been of a challenge down the road that we have, we've covered our bases there, so.
I'll make the first motion. I'll make the first motion. I move that the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation with concurrent rezone to RS six point five under planning files A N zero three two zero and Z C zero four two zero, as described in the March fifteen, twenty twenty one staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at this hearing, and the findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Give a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
I'll go ahead and read that first ordinance then, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map number eleven S dash zero three W dash two zero as tax lot six zero six and amending ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Title only. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
No opposition?
No opposition. I'm assuming those opposed? No opposition, thank you.
All right. An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map, number eleven S or one one dash zero three W dash two zero as tax lot six zero six and amending ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need a second, we needed a second.
I'm sorry, I need a second, I need a second.
All second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes.
And so now the, the second motion would be to remove the rural fire district.
Whoever's motion?
I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw a three point, thirty five point three two acre parcel located north of three seven nine five Lochner Road southeast from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion pass.
Okay. An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map, number one one S dash zero three W dash zero as tax lot six zero six from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Move that your second time only.
There we go.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map, number one one S dash zero three W dash two zero as tax lot six zero six from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you.
So I, so the results, I have to read this next statement, number twenty four. The decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal no later than twenty one days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days, follow adoption of the amendment or, or new land use regulation. The director shall forward the, to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings and notify the department of any substantial changes which may be, may have occurred and proposed in a proposal since any previous notification of the department. No one will return to the regular. Okay, so we're gonna go here. Next thing on the agenda is business from the public, and on business from the public, I'm gonna have to read a statement. It's over here. There's no script. Business from the public, from the here we go, yeah, it is right here. We have like thirty documents open, sorry, give me a second. Business from the public is where persons wishing to address the council. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless intended, extended by the mayor. Counselors should hold their comments until business from the council, all written material has been forwarded to, to the councils and entered in public record. Instruction for getting copies of the public record is on the city's website under business from the public. The following persons have submitted items for the record, Jill Zeller of Albany in Hazelwood Park, Stephen Bray, Albany from Hazelwood Park, the following person signed up to speak, Jill Zeller. Jill Zeller, please unmute yourself, thank you very much.
Well, hi, I'm here, I hope you can see me and hear me.
Yes, we can, I can.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, I did submit my letter, and I'm just actually gonna read it to you, and we can read it again at your leisure, whenever you like. You already know my name, my name is Jill Zeller, and my husband and I live at twenty ten Seventeenth Avenue Southwest in the first ward. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members, for the opportunity to speak today about Hazelwood Park. And to give you a little background, we moved from Seattle onto this property, where our backyard abuts the park. And after buying it in two thousand and fifteen, one of the reasons we liked this property was because no one would ever be able to build anything on a city park, right? And we would have the pleasure of using the park easily. And I want to add that there's, in our view, of stand of oak, Douglas fir, and pines, it's a beautiful and vital habitat for birds and other small wildlife, which is very important to us. The park is widely used by the neighborhood for dog walking, spending time in the outdoors, and for family gatherings. More than a month ago, we learned that the city had, because I believe, could be wrong, Parks and Recreation budget shortfalls, decided to offload two small city parks in the city of Albany, Hazelwood behind us being one of them. Proposals from interested parties, what I understand is, will be accept, will be accepted starting in May of this year. I have since learned that the master plan, including divestment of Hazelwood Park, that I read about in the city council minutes, was approved in two thousand and nine. We weren't aware of this development and felt rather blindsided by this accelerating process. My neighbors and I would have appreciated a heads up from our two ward leaders that the decision to sell the land was finally in motion. My husband and I learned of this from an article in the Democrat Herald about the Creating Housing Coalition Plan for Developing Tiny Homes in the Property. As I said, we would have preferred to hear from the city council directly about this change and to understand that you had notified our neighborhood of this plan. Sadly, it's not within my power to stop the sale of the land, which frankly breaks my heart. But I would like to ask the city council for some communication and transparency. So right now, I ask the city council for, or to, make it so our neighborhood can see a detailed listing of all the proposals for the park that come to you. Help us monitor discussions about these proposals at open meetings, not closed ones. And keep open, keep your minds open to keeping the Broadway Queen neighborhoods updated on a, on a regular basis. I had, had the pleasure of speaking to Stacy Bartholomew about the C H C's plan. We had a friendly and informative conversation. I will add that I have no problem with the coalition's efforts to providing affordable housing, although I admit my neighbors may not share my view. After talking with Stacy, I feel a bit more reassured. We do not want to see an apartment block or new home development squeezed into that land. I urge the city council to consider sustainable, community organizing, green development of the park property. So again, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much. So Jill, we really appreciate your presence here today.
Okay.
Counsel, we're gonna talk about this during business from the council, so we have to move on. Thank you so much again for attending.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is award of a contract on page sixty six and seven through seventy nine. Pipe twenty two thousand, twenty twenty one pipe bursting projects S S dash two one dash zero one, and staff Laurie Schumacher is wanting to speak with us this evening, or is it Stacy?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, I'm gonna give the report for, for staff. So good evening, Mayor and council members. Staff is recommending that council award a contract to Emery and Sons Construction Group in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand, thirty dollars for construction of the twenty twenty one sewer pipe bursting project. We received four bids for this project, ranging from the low bid up to approximately nine hundred and nine thousand. So this project will include the replacement of approximately thirty one hundred feet of eight and twelve inch sewer pipes with new pipe using the pipe bursting construction method. We use trenchless construction methods such as pipe bursting on our replacement projects whenever possible because the per foot cost is, you know, in some cases, sixty percent cheaper compared to using an open trench or a traditional construction method. Also, trenchless construction is less disruptive, we're not having to dig in, dig trenches in the streets, and then when sewer lines are located along the backlot lines of properties, we're not having to dig up people's backyards. Funding for this project is from the Sewer System Capital Projects Fund, which receives funds from sewer rates. Are there any questions?
Counsel? Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I want to say that it's always nice when the bids come in under what the engineer's estimate is, and we've worked with Emery and Sons so much, we know the quality of their work, so I think this is a, a good thing, and it's something that's needed really bad, so I'm up for it.
Any other counsel have a comment or statement? Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do?
Move to approve the award of contract for the pipe bursting project to Emery and Sons as listed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, you the same sign, please? Motion pass. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy, for doing your report, greatly appreciate it. Next is the adoption of the consent calendar. Counsel?
I would move for adoption of the consent calendar as presented with one comment. I will have an appointment to the Landmarks Commission to, on the next council agenda.
Thank you for that.
And my appointee is on, watching the meeting tonight.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks. Seconded.
Most, most, seconded, thank you, Counselor Novak. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Staff reports, city services fee option, city manager Peter Choats and the finance director, Jenny Agar, on page ninety two.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and counselors, thanks again for letting us present. Let me begin tonight by reiterating that the construction of the city services fee that you're considering is being undertaken to try to be ready. The council has not made a decision to implement. And by deciding on a rate structure tonight, you are not, you're not committing to implementing a city services fee. I heard the desire on Monday to know what a city services fee would fund, and we can, we can certainly address the shortfalls in the budget, as you know, we're in the middle of putting the budget together, though that would be a bit premature, and I worry that it may distract you from the review and action that we need to move forward. So I want to show you where we are in the process, and Matt, let me see if I can share a screen here.
You should be able to.
Okay, do you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Another point to, another point to reiterate is that we don't want to get to a point where the council realizes that revenues are insufficient to fund the services needed, and then be faced with a year of preparation to construct this vehicle. Looking into the future, the revenue that would be provided by a city services fee will be needed. But the council, as of now, has made no such commitment, as you can see on this timeline, you, we had a presentation, we began the fee study, generated fee options, and here's where we are now, where the council would select a rate option. The council, again, has made no such commitment to implement and will not until at least, what does that say, thirty to a hundred and twenty days from now? And at that point, the council could very well decide against implementation, or the council could decide to implement at a base rate of zero, at a base rate of zero, not nine dollars or eight seventy, but zero, in recognition of the current hardships faced by so many in our community. Let me stop sharing here. There we go. Okay, tonight, we're asking the council to decide on a key component of the structure of this vehicle, to weigh the relative merits and drawbacks of these rate structure options that you saw on Monday, and make a decision indicating which option is preferred or would be preferred. This is more than a theoretical exercise. It requires you to consider the financial burden that might have to be imposed on the community at a future date, and how that burden should be allocated, considering fairness and scalability. You've heard a comprehensive presentation from Deb on Monday, and she's here again to answer your questions, and if needed, to walk you through the process. Deb, at this point, I'll ask you to put up the slide with options one through four to help start the discussion, and Matt, if you could make sure she has the, the power to share.
Sure.
Counsel, counsel, after you decide on a rate structure, you'll have thirty to a hundred and twenty days to consider the need for these services, the risks associated with a lack of funding, and the impacts on our citizens. At that point, the decision for you, as the Albany communities representatives, will be whether to implement or to delay implementation. Implementation will not happen unless and until you give the go ahead. So again, we're ready, I'm ready to talk about funding shortfalls, if, if that's the desire, but the primary purpose of the evening is to decide on a rate structure option, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Deb Galardi.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me, and let me know what you can see on the screen. Is that the, the cover page?
It is. It's presenter's notes again.
Okay, let's try swapping that, how about that?
Back to the same problem.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we did a, we did a test run this afternoon, and of course, it worked perfectly.
Everything worked perfect, yeah.
Yeah, so, like your earlier presenter.
You touched your computer between.
I know, right?
And now, didn't you? Okay, try, try stopping, bringing it up in slideshow mode in PowerPoint, and then sharing your screen.
Okay, so you want me to stop, share? And then what was that, Matt? You wanted me to?
Then start the slideshow in PowerPoint and then share your screen.
Okay.
Just change the order of events, basically, and see if that makes a difference.
Let's see. Okay, I'll come back to sharing. Are you getting that? There, let's try that.
There we go.
Bingo. Got it? Okay, and the, how is the scale if I?
Looks good.
It's good.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect's good enough. Peter, which slide did you have in mind? Were you thinking the just
The one that?
This kind of slide or slide with the sample bills?
Yeah, there you, there, to familiarize the council with what the four options are. We've also got the chart that Sean has brought to you this afternoon, which shows impacts on those units. And I can, we can show that screen as well.
Yeah, my sample bill comparison is a little bit more busy, as you can see. So it just, it shows the first three columns of mine are the customer information that gives you information on the number of units, the meter size and the impervious area, which are all important to the calculation of the fee. But the, but the four bill columns to the right are really more where the focus. But if you'd prefer to show Sean's slide, then I would ask for.
Okay. Why don't we hear that if you stop sharing and then I will
Okay.
share. And if the mayor wants to recognize a question, I see Counsel Smith have the question.
Oh, Counselor Smith, go ahead, please.
I was just going to say from this slide presentation, the one that was most useful to me was the one with the four options outlined and one, option three was highlighted in green.
Ah, okay.
That seemed to get to, yeah, that seemed to get to the meat of it for me.
Okay, okay, good. Well, maybe I can talk about this one to introduce, reintroduce us and re-ground us to the four options. And then if you want to share, I can stop share and then you can show the bills under the different options. Does that work?
That'll work.
Okay, okay, great. So as we discussed, we have four options on the table here that are the preliminary options and we can revise, refine as we get more feedback from council. I think that, you know, we identified some potential criteria of which you could use to evaluate these options. And it's helpful to have some understanding about how the rate structure and the fee levels that we've set at this point would impact the different customer classes. So residential being your single-family residential customers, multifamily being as suggests multiple unit customers. So generally, most cases, everything above duplex. So triplex, fourplex and the larger structures. Commercial industrial is everybody else. So that would include institutional as well, schools, hospitals, retail, everything. And the under the four options, the, the main difference is, are the scalability and the complexity. And, and the scalability really then impacts how much you recover from the different classes. Because if we have a low scalability, and when I talk about scale, you can also think about it as a range of fees. So a highly scalable option has a lower floor, smaller, has the smallest fee, but then has a higher ceiling. So you're potentially going to be charging your largest customers, however you measure that, either by meter size or impervious area or number of units pay much more. And your small, but, but the advantage of that is that your smaller customers pay much less. A less scalable tends to average the fees and you have a much narrower range of fee possibilities, but that also means you don't have as high a ceiling. So it really, what depending on your appetite for that range and most importantly, that, that ceiling, how high the fees go is, would be one of the determinants in which option you like. Because option one is the least scalable. It has basically a flat fee per unit. It varies by class, but everybody within commercial industrial would pretty much pay the same rate, no matter how small or how large you are. We get more scalable as we move to the right and we introduce meter size as a potential basis for scaling. So you, the, you would have a, a lower rate and actually the lower, the rate is lower for the lowest unit, the smallest meter size than in option one. Again, because option one just kind of averages. So you have in the example that we showed, eighteen dollars was that average rate. In option two, the smallest meter size would pay a lower rate of nine dollars, consistent with residential, but would pay a much higher, there'd be a much higher ceiling, a much broader range upwards. One meter, that's ten, you have one ten-inch meter that would pay over a thousand dollars a month under this option. So much broader scale. Option three, similarly has that meter size basis for commercial and industrial. But also charges, you know, multifamily based on number of units. And I think one, one thing might be helpful is to talk about residential and non-residential separately because what makes sense for residential may not make sense for, it doesn't really make sense as well for commercial industrial. So you can have those conversations separately. But multifamily under, the difference between option two and option three is that multifamily would be charged based on number of units. And option three, based on meet, or sorry, option two, multifamily would be charged based on the meter size. And option three, based on each dwelling unit. And then the fourth option was option also has the dwelling unit approach for all residential, but introduces a tiered concept for commercial industrial that relates to your impervious area. So your building footprint and your parking areas and things like that as an indicator of your size and potential benefit demand impact on services. And there we've established three tiers. There's nothing magic about that other than the fact that you use three tiers for some of your other utility rates. And so that one's kind of an in-between scalability that you, in terms of the range of fees. So it also has a lower floor than the averaged option, option one, and a higher, you know, top tier, and I think in the case was about thirty-eight dollars. But obviously a much narrower range than under the meter size concept. So we tried to bring you different options that depending on, again, your appetite for having a wide range of fees would move you to option three. But also that allows us to raise more revenue, preserve the lowest fee for the smallest customers. And versus having more of an averaged, small range cap that maximum fee than you would choose, you know, something either the tiered approach. Or if you really just don't want, if you want people to pay kind of the same, no matter what, except if they have more dwelling units or commercial units, then you would choose option one. So maybe we can talk about it in terms of numbers and I'll stop sharing. And if you want to share that other chart that Sean put together?
Sure.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Move to my other screen here. Okay, so in this case, you can see the four options. These are sample bills for typical customers. And so I'm going to talk about it in terms of, maybe we can talk about residential first and then non-residential. You've got the residential, single-family customer right in the middle. And as I said, you know, this is same rate all the way across because none of these structures introduce a scaling concept for single-family residential. We've assumed a uniform cost per, per unit, per month. There is a lower fee for low income. So preserving the lowest fees for the most vulnerable in the community as defined by those income qualifying guidelines. For apartments, there is a difference across the options and most notably in option two. So the first two lines of the table here, you can see higher fees in option two. Because in this example, this is a, the small is a five-unit complex and the large is a ten-unit complex. So in all, in options one, three and four, it's the, you know, a base rate per unit times the number of units. And the option two is based on the meter size. So in this case, because there are fewer units per, you know, meter, options one, three and four are advantageous to these customers. But in some, in other cases, the reverse would be true. Because you might have a lot of units that are served by a smaller meter. So I think that, you know, with, with multifamily customers, dwelling units are a built-in scaling factor that, you know, we don't have to look to meter size. We can just say a multi, each multifamily unit represents a living unit family or individual that benefits from the city services and can pay in proportion to, as other residential, based on the living unit. But recognizing that generally you have fewer people per household. And so we discount the unit paid, the, each living unit pays slightly less than a resident, a single-family residential. So that's the concept behind options one, three and four. And the option two just looks at, well, if you want to just base everything on meter size, then you could do that for multifamily and there would be some scaling in there. But living unit is generally a more fair and common approach for assessing these kinds of fees. For non-residential, again, you could, you know, just look at the very bottom of, of the chart, the last four lines there are different types of retail and a restaurant. Option one is that nice, steady, flat, no scaling, you know, everybody pays the same. But in some cases, it's a higher fee for a smaller customer as we move to the right and we start introducing a wider range of fees. Low, lower floor, you know, you can have some customers that'll only pay, pay nine dollars. But then you'll have a higher ceiling, some customers paying hundreds of dollars. So in this case, the four inches, the highest, well, you can see the high school up the, about the fourth or fifth line under this approach has the six-inch meter is four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Four-inch meter, two twenty-five, you know, most of your customers have two-inch or smaller, but there are, you know, some dozen, dozens of customers, not hundreds, but you know, I don't know, fifty maybe that have three-inch and above. So, so that's, that's the trade-off, right? I mean, this is a really, I think, great example of that, that trade-off of having a steady, uniform fee versus one that really has a lot of scale and a lot of variability. Option three is, is basically the, treats pretty much the same for non-residential. They, you use the meter size. So there's no difference between those fees. Option, option three only had the difference between, for apartments. But option four then is that more moderate scaling approach of have the lowest tier that like option three would have, have a, reserve a smaller rate than option one for small customers. And then your top rate, your, your tier three rate would be higher than option one, but much smaller than option two and three. Because we have a, we've constrained the, the ceiling on that, based on that, that tiering approach. But there's, there, again, that's part of the policy question is, you know, how much range do you you know, feel there should be a cap certain level that you wouldn't want to go over? Do you like the scale because it preserves the smaller fees for the the very smallest customers and would allow you to generate more revenue by charging those, those higher end, upper tier rates based on a meter size? So I'll stop there and happy to answer questions.
Counsel, Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, Deb. I mean, this is a lot to take in. I read it over and over and I still, you know, it's all different. But I want to say now, I want to ask you, now with the apartment complex, say you're looking at the large ten-unit, ten units to the apartment complex. Now, does that mean on option, okay, option one, for one thing, the small apartment went from thirty-six to seventy-two in option two and that's only double. And then on option, the large complex went from seventy-two, it almost is tripled. And so that concerns me. But then is this, like, say the two twenty-five, is that per, okay, per meter, like they would say, there would be ten meters in that complex?
Oh, no, that is assumed to be the meter that serves the complex. So that's a great question. So like if you have an irrigation meter, because you might have multiple meters in the complex, but likely only one that would serve the units and then you might have another irrigation meter. The irrigation meter would not be charged. So this would just be the, the meter size or the meter that serves the complex, the units itself. Yeah.
You know, I mean, rents are so high anymore anyway. And so the fee, you know, it's going to be passed on, the rents are going to go up. So there is so much pros and cons to weigh with this that, and then the, the commercial, you know, they're going to pass it on too. I really don't have any clue what is the best way to go. I just, I just think no matter what is going to, you know, raise prices and hurt businesses and, and residential. So I'm, I'm really torn on this. Thank you.
Counselors, does anybody have anything else?
I have a question.
Counselor Novak.
Yes, thank you. I would appreciate an understanding of the difference in fees with regard to the high school because it goes from eighteen dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars or thirty-eight twenty-five. And the same thing with, what was it, City Hall, one forty-four, a difference of a hundred and forty-four dollars versus eighteen dollars or thirty-eight twenty-five? Like where, who, who's paying that fee if, if the high school is being charged four hundred and fifty dollars? How's, how is the high school? I mean, where's that money coming from? I mean, where's that money coming from? And does that, how does that impact? I don't even know how to phrase this question. I'm kind of with Counselor Johnson with, I don't even know where to start on this. It just, fees hurt. And I know we're not implementing, we're just trying to decide. But I'm, I'm kind of in a similar position where I'm looking at this and going, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know what the best call is. I, but back to my question. So it's with regard to the jump between, for instance, $18 versus $450 or $18 versus 144? If you could explain to me where that, where that is being taken from, how they're, how they're paying for it?
I, I'm not a school funding expert, so I, I can't speak to how, how they pay for it. They're a customer of the city. I can speak to the differentials across the options. If, that is, which sounded like that was part of the question?
Yes, please.
Okay, so under, and, and this really illustrates the, the difference between the options in terms of that scalability. So as, as you noted, very, for the high school, very relatively small fee, $18 a month under option one, because option one treats, just charges all non-residential, $18 per month per account. And they're, they're an account, so, or associated with that meter. When we moved to meter size in options two and three, they have a six-inch meter. And that six-inch meter is needed likely because the school is fairly large. It's got a lot of plumbing fixtures, units, a lot of water fountains, bathrooms and things. Because there's a lot of kids that come through there. So the question is, when you think about it of, well, $18 versus 450, the 450 is intended to recognize more the fact that there are a lot of people, employees, teachers, you know, that, that are in that facility. And as there are more people, there are greater benefit, you know, use of city services. So, and, you know, maybe, so that's, that's the, the jump from just doing a flat, everybody the same, to a scaling, and this particular customer has a very large meter. And the third option, or actually option four, which has the $38. So in addition to having large meter, the school has a lot of impervious area. It's parking lots, buildings. So they would fall in the upper tier of option four. Because we're, we've grouped customers based on their impervious area. And they are one of, you know, a large, impervious area customer. But this option is designed with tiers just to, you know, basically there's a, a cap, a lower range, much narrower range of fees with, it tops out at 38 bucks. That's what they would pay. There's no magic in the 38, other than the fact that, you know, I was trying to give you options that were similar to some, what some of the other cities were charging. And Salem, for example, charges all their non-residential customer accounts $38, $38 and some cents. Corvallis, on the other hand, uses the meter size basis. And so a six-inch meter, their, their charges are actually significantly higher than what these are here. So that just, so these are fees that are charged in other areas. And I just tried to illustrate the different options using those fee levels.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith, best, Counsel Johnson, you have anything? Your hand is up. I see, I see Counsel Olson. No, good Counsel Olson, I don't think Counsel Johnson has anything, go ahead. On mute, please. You're still muted, Counsel Olson.
Sorry. Yeah, I, I think we're looking for a way to help pay for a variety of things that our present income doesn't cover. Like police and fire and parks and so forth. And I think the options that go by meter size tend to kind of scale with how much the individual demand of various entities in our city draw on the, on the cost of, of running our city. So I, I think it's good to have something scaling like that rather than just the option one, which is based on, on a smaller range of items. So I tend to like option three.
Thank you, Counsel Olson. Does anyone else have anything? Counselor? City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out and maybe ask Deb to, to comment on the fact that all of these figures are based on that small figure in the top-left corner that says example rate, $9. So that's, that's a variable that could come down. And then all of those other numbers would come down too.
Counselor Smith had something before, thank you, Peter. Counselor Smith had something before, got those, Mr. Parks, John Park.
Thank you. Counselor Olson covered what I was planning to mention, that these fees, what these fees would pay for. And the effects that, the, how these individual institutions and other customers use those services. The effect that on, on those, the need for the services based on how much they pay for them. Some of them are not paying anything at the present time because they, they're not property taxpayers. It's property taxpayers who are paying for police, fire, library and parks right now. And this, instituting a fee like this equalizes the, it, it, it's a use fee across the, the breadth of users in the community. I also wanted to, I thank Peter for pointing out that this is an example rate. What, something that frequently happens when people are presented with a spreadsheet full of numbers, the numbers burn into your brain and that's all you can think about. And I, I would hope that we can keep our focus on what we're trying to accomplish, what we're, what problem we're trying to solve. And the potential cost of that. But we're trying to solve a problem first. And the, the cost may not be $9 a month, it may be something very different.
So thank you very much, Counsel. One of the things I would recommend is make that as big as possible and bold it. So you see examples stand out all the page. Sean Park, please, man. Sean Park got his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I wanted to speak a little bit to the, the, the complexity of these rate options. And I'm dovetail with a question you had the other night that I, I didn't have an opportunity to answer regarding schedule and cost. And moving left to right through options one through four, the, the complexity increases accordingly. With three and four being fairly similar complexity-wise. Starting out at option one, you're looking at 30 days to build out that particular vehicle. Whereas we progress across to options three and four, are we looking at approximately 120 days to build out those particular vehicles that are then ready to be turned on at some point?
Okay, thank you very much, that really helps, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, one more thing. One more thing is we had, to date, we've invested approximately 120 staff hours in this particular study. And we're looking at anywhere from, from 90 to, to 210 hours additional staff time, depending on the option that it's chosen. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. So I have Counsel Kupczynski first, and then Counsel Novak.
Well, since, I'll echo what Counselor Smith has stated already. But since this is simply the exercise by which we give the opportunity for the staff to come up with the final tool, the numbers we can plug in, we can plug in later. But to even get this going, I personally believe that option number three is the correct one to start with as a baseline. And I move that we use that option and for the staff to start working, working on the plan.
We have a motion. Can I take Counsel Novak's comment first? All right, Counsel Kupczynski, thank you, Counsel Novak.
Thank you kindly. I just wanted to mention with regard to, since you have a subcategory as an example of restaurant, on behalf of all restaurants, they are not all the same size. Some are smaller, some of, some are larger. And I would hope that that would be something that we could maybe scale as we're scaling other things, take into account the, the, the fact that, that, again, the size of a restaurant should have some bearing, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've, we've had a motion, so we need to act on that motion, I believe.
I don't, I didn't hear a second, but I offered one while I was muted.
Say again, say again, where we at?
I, I said I didn't hear a second to the motion. I muted, I offered one when I was muted and then I'll say it out loud this time.
Okay, maybe with Counsel Olson?
Talking about restaurants, the example we have here, I would guess is for a smaller restaurant. And if you had a very large restaurant, you'd have a larger meter, perhaps, and a higher charge for a larger restaurant.
That, I agree with you, Counsel Olson.
As you know, am I on the right track here?
That's what I understand it to be as well. So Counsel, Sean Park, what do you have? Your hands up.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. To your question, Counselor Novak, for the purposes of this simplified chart that we see, on the restaurant side of the scale, we use the average meter size that we encountered in the data of one inch. And as we get into the other rate options that use things such as impervious area, we chose the middle tier just as, as a middle of the ground to, for illustration purposes. Of course, some restaurants have larger than one-inch meters. And some restaurants have smaller than 3,200 square feet of impervious area. And that variability would be injected into a much larger chart, which we're happy to, to come up with, to display it another day.
Does that satisfy you, Counsel Novak? Thank you. Counsel Olson?
Does the same answer apply to apartments of varying size? The example we have here, if it's a relatively small apartment, it only has five people in it, it seems like the charge here is kind of exorbitant. But
Okay, Sean.
It seems like it ought to be scaled. Family.
I think he's going to respond to that in the same way. I think I read this chart, is it, everything is scalable. This is just an example, my correction.
Yes, Mayor Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, I was, okay, what, you're just saying that this is just, these are just examples. So what we're seeing is, is not
real.
What's going to happen.
Correct.
And so that kind of bothers me because, I mean, I know it's, we're not implementing. And I'm hoping that everybody agrees that we're not implementing because I've had so much pushback on this already. Like, you know, we just got all this money, so why do we have to do this? But I, you know, I hate to pick something if we don't have a, an idea, a real idea of what it would be. You know, give us some examples of
This, this is, Counsel Johnson, this is the example he's providing for us.
But it's not true cases.
Yes, City Manager, he's, that does sound up.
Okay.
Okay, so Counsel Johnson, it, it is real. And I would, again, I'd ask Deb Glory to comment on it. But it, it, what is real about this is the allocation, is how, how costs are allocated out. It's not a, it's not a full picture. Because as you heard from Sean, there's other scalability issues that don't appear here. He picked a sample of, of, of units that would give a good idea. But what it does give you is an idea of how the burden would be split out between different, different rate payers. Now, if you change that example rate from $9 to $8, you would see every figure in that table decrease. If you change it from $9 to $10, you would see every figure in that table increase. So, but you have to be careful when you do that because behind each of these cells, there are formulas. So, you know, if you increase or decrease $1 from the base, it would have a different effect on a high school than it would have on a restaurant.
Right.
But that doesn't mean it's not a real model. It is a real model. It's just giving you an idea of how you can break out the burden among different rate payers.
Yeah, I think the key word is burden. All right, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Peter. Sean, do you have something else before we move on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Just a point of clarification, and I apologize if I didn't make this clear at the outset is the, the chart that you see on the screen is, is data pulled from city data. It's a sample set of data that we, we're, we're providing to, to kind of illustrate a cross-section of real-world examples within the city. So these aren't, these aren't made up, as Peter alluded to, they're, they're real, they're true, actual instances of what will occur for these particular customer types within Albany at a rate of $9.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Counsel, Counsel Kupczynski, would you like to do that again? Yeah, you're muted.
I move that we start with option number three and we'll get more details as we go forward. We've got about 120 days before we make a decision. And we may make a decision with $0 as a base or somewhere in between, oh, it's a $9 or $10. We don't know that yet. But we may have to give the staff time to put this together. That's what they've given us by going through these exercises the last few weeks. So I'm, I move that we approve option number three.
I second that a second time.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstent, any, any, all those opposed? Motion pass. Thank you all for this discussion. Thank you, Matt, thanks staff for, for talking, putting up those votes. Next is the Cooperative Procurement Memberships, NCPA, by Diane Merzinski.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Diane isn't able to be here tonight, so I'm going to be covering this for her. Basically, we just want you to approve by motion. Just give us approval to enter into some cooperative membership agreements. We currently have several agreements for, with cooperative organizations that allow us to save time for, in both budget and our staff time also, because we don't have to necessarily go out for RFPs. With all of these agreements, we still do our due diligence. We still make sure that it's something that makes sense for the city. And most of these that we're asking to get approval for, we're already in a membership agreement with them. They've just merged. And so now the company is something a little bit different than what it once was. There is one new company that we are hoping to enter into an agreement with that would make some of our public works operations purchasing a little bit easier and a little bit cheaper.
Counsel? Counsel Olson?
Do we ever check on those people to make sure that we're getting the best price from what they say is the best price?
Absolutely. We do our due diligence for each of these. And, and right now, all of these, when we enter into a cooper, cooperative agreement or, you know, do a sole source or a special procurement, it currently comes to counsel for your approval.
Well, yeah, but I'm not going to go out and see what the price of a desk chair is or whatever it is you're buying.
We do do that.
You do. I'm reassured.
She's handling tax for his money, she has to do. So Counsel, any other questions for your director?
I would move to approve the Cooperative Procurement Membership Agreement.
Those, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next on the agenda, number nine, item nine, is the business from the council. And I'm going to use my screen as the gatekeeper. So Counsel Kupczynski, your first. And I'm gonna use my screen as the gatekeeper. So Counselor Kupczynski, you're first up on the screen.
Okay, I did have a constituent call, call me this afternoon, uh, saying that there's been, uh, heavy amount of speeding on Oak Street between Queen and Pacific, uh, with large trucks. Very, they're very, very concerned about children possibly being injured or, or even worse. Uh, and thought that we ought to be able to do something about that. Uh, I said, I said, did you notify the police? And she said, yes. Uh, she did say that they put out a traffic, uh, calming device that shows the miles per hour. She said that makes absolutely no difference whatsoever. She said some of the trucks are going upwards of fifty miles an hour in that twenty-five zone. She said people are using it as a shortcut. Uh, she said it's probably out on the web, that somebody says they can do a shortcut with trucks on that street. Um, and I said I would bring it up, uh, to council this evening and see if potentially, we might even be able to get a traffic count. Uh, some of the wires across the road, just to see if it's exceeding, uh, traffic, uh, limits before the street was put in, uh, or improved the way it was. So that's all I have.
So, Peter, you have a comment?
Just that we'll take that for action and, and I'll check with, uh, with our transportation engineer and police department about getting, uh, traffic measuring. Going on.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Kupczynski, can you tell me again on Oak, what, what part of Oak?
Between, uh, Queen and Pacific.
Okay, thanks.
Goes along Kinder Park, down past Lowe's, et cetera.
Right.
But thank you. You had a question, Counsel Olson? Is it during his time?
Um, I didn't, are we done? It was, um, Ray?
Order my computer, so Counselor Kupczynski, are you done? Counselor Smith, do you have anything today?
No.
Counselor Olson?
Uh, yes, uh, maybe it's related, but I'm, uh, getting complaints from my neighbors that live on Ferry Street here uh, between, uh, Ninth and, um, downtown. That there's a large number of, uh, heavy trucks and school buses that are, uh, traveling on Ferry Street. And apparently it's a company that is training drivers to drive these, this heavy equipment stuff. And, um, uh, the major complaint, of course, is the noise as they're, uh, stopping and starting. And, uh, my question, uh, aside from the noise is, you know, our downtown side streets here are, um, a, a layer of asphalt over the, uh, historic, um, uh, mud streets from, um, a hundred years ago. And, um, uh, Broad Alvin, I don't want you to do anything with Broad Alvin, but it's got a lot of nice little humps in it. That tend to slow people down and, um, and I kind of enjoy driving over. But, uh, could we find out whether it is, what the deal is with the, um, uh, driver training company that's training, uh, heavy truck drivers? And, uh, whether, uh, Ferry Street needs to, um, uh, take the full brunt of, um, of these training exercises.
I think Pete's writing everything down, he just said.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've had these complaints for the last, oh, six months or so.
Anything else, Counsel Olson?
No, no.
Oh, uh, Count, thank you very much, Counsel Olson. Counselor Bessie, Johnson?
Well, I had, um, had a call and it was basically referring to the Human Relations Commission, Commission meeting that we had. And the comment was that instead of having fourteen, sixteen people make the decision of what the commission is for, that it should be maybe put out, uh, for ideas from the public. You know, it's kind of hard for just fourteen people to, uh, decide language and things like. But anyway, this person says that, uh, they'd like more transparency on, on what's going on and, and, uh, just see what, see what can happen. And I, I said I'd bring it up and, uh, go from there. And that's basically all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew.
Thank you. I also spoke with, uh, Anita Thompson, who spoke with Ray Kupczynski, and so I'm glad that that's being addressed. I, my one question, uh, in addition to that, was our transition, um, into a hybrid meeting structure, and I was wondering when that was going to be taking place. And, um, how that would proceed. How would we be pursuing? Thank you, Peter.
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Um, yes, Counselor Bartholomew, we had a, a meeting today in the council chambers with the executive leadership team. And all worked very well. Thank you to Matt Harrington and Holly Roden. And, uh, we're on track to have the first hybrid council meeting on April twelfth. Now, I have to point out and remind everybody that you still, you have to wear masks in, in the council chambers. And we have to keep our social distance. We still have all the OSHA standards that we have to comply with. But you also have the option to participate, continue to participate from home or from some other remote location. That's, in, in essence, that's what the word hybrid means, so that we can do it, uh, either in person or virtually. But April twelfth is the first time we'll do that.
Thank you, Peter. Counselor Bartholomew?
Thank you.
Counselor Novak?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. So I appreciate that, everyone. I have four things that I would like to bring up. Um, HRC Subcommittee that we talked about the end of the last meeting, uh, I've selected those, uh, those, those participants. Uh, Dr. Greg Haynes still is graciously donating his time as our facilitator. Uh, I'm asking, uh, Counsel One, Commissioner One, Miavi, Commissioner Stephanie Newton, and Commissioner Lizzie Churchill to participate. And then State, Counselor Stacy Bartholomew, uh, Counselor Marilyn Smith, and Counselor Vic Olson to participate. And I will be the chair of that committee. Uh, so we'll be contacting you with the times we're gonna meet and get together and kind of put that round work together. And I want to thank the staff for supporting us in the development of the new purpose of the, uh, Human Relations Council. Uh, next thing is the downtown project. We met with, uh, the AVA Director, Executive Director Lisa Rado and with Rebecca Bond and people from Wawa and these other alphabet associations that were fantastic. And the downtown project is moving along. Uh, there's, I think approximately fifty thousand dollars with the grant money plus donations. And so it's going to happen and we're pretty excited about it. And so you'll be seeing more about that. We are looking for volunteers. If you'd like to help participate in setting up the alleyways and helping clean up the alleyways. Please contact, uh, visitors of, of the Downtown Association. Uh, Lisa's expecting your call. Yes, thank you. And, and then, um, I received an email today from one of the companies I work with in my business. And they have a grant project that brought opportunity for the city of Albany and I forwarded that to the appropriate parties. Um, and they're looking to help cities start to recover from the pandemic economically. Help me support projects like what we're doing downtown in parks and things like that. So I'm hoping we will follow that up. And then last thing is that there's a flag still affixed to a flag, a street sign on Pacific. And it's just past the storage place, the Letman Storage Place. And so I was wondering if somebody could take a look at that for me. Cause I mentioned it last work session, but it's still up. And other than that, uh, a lot of people, people are happy about the, the term that's coming to town this summer. And, um, it was a, it was a good week. Uh, I think I'm done. And City Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The, the reason that we gathered in the, in the council chambers this morning for a meeting was to hear about the American Rescue Plan Act. And, uh, one point nine trillion dollars is a heck of a lot of money. And, uh, some of that is, is, will come to Oregon and some will come direct to, to Albany. There are a lot of opportunities in that act to help our community. And, uh, we'll be looking for ways to, uh, identify, uh, what funds are available to us. And, uh, if the council would, uh, let me do so, we'll start, uh, working on putting together a team of community members to try to help identify what needs there are and how we might match those with funding sources that are associated with the ARPA. And, uh, if, if that's okay with you all, we'll start, we'll start working on that and identify quite a few, uh, members of the public to help us with that. And the only thing, the only other thing I have for you, that, you know, unless you have any questions about that, is to let you know that I got my vaccination today. And my arm does not hurt, so.
Fantastic. So, is that it? The City Manager, Peter? That's it? Uh, next meeting dates will be Monday, April twelfth. It'll be a hybrid meeting. I'm so looking forward to that, the four P M work session. And Wednesday, April fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one at six P M. Oh, and one last thing, if you wanna yell at me, I'll be on West Albany Football Field this Friday evening for the game.
Boo the officials?
And so with that said, thank you all for attending this, this evening's meeting. If you have any questions for your city council, please sure to contact them. You have any questions for me? Give me a call. You got my number. And, uh, I'll go talk for the German meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, sir.